It was thirty-eight degrees.
Good evening. Welcome to the February third, two thousand twenty-five Troy City Council meeting. We request that you silence all cell phones for the duration of the meeting. Uh, invocation tonight is by Mr. Twist. Please stand.
You bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you that we could gather tonight and we appreciate all of our freedoms that this great nation gives us. We are grateful for the community that we live in and the many things afforded to us. We ask a blessing on those first responders, those serving in the military and our veterans, that you would watch over and protect them. And we just ask that you would come this evening and give us wisdom and guidance and where we're supposed to go. We ask that in your name. Amen.
Amen. Blessings to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Knight, could you please call the roll?
Mrs. Westfall?
Here.
Mr. Twist?
Here.
Mr. Severt?
Present.
Mr. Pierce?
Present.
Mrs. Snee?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Schilling?
Present.
Mr. Widdon?
Here.
Mrs. Marshall?
Move to excuse Mrs. Marshall, second.
Motion to excuse Mrs. Marshall by Mr. Widdon, second by Mr. Severt. Mrs. Knight, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall is excused.
All right. Mayor Oda, you had the fourth quarter Rumpke Look Who's Recycling Award today?
Yes. Mr. Weidner? Is it Weidner or Meidner?
What?
Weidner. Come on. Nice to meet you, gentlemen. Here, please. This is the audience. So, on behalf of Rumpke, you were chosen as the recycling winner this quarter. And you submitted a just a short phrase to help keep specific trash out of the landfills. It is better for the environment and population devices our brains and resources to be competent healthier. And they like that. And we chose you as the this quarter's winner. So, congratulations. Thank you for you and your wife for participating in. And this is a little something from Rumpke. It's usually a gift card to one of the restaurants here in downtown Troy. There you go. There you go. Thank you so much. We want to get you out of here. Um, you're pretty safe, wanted to, but.
I got stuff to do.
I'm so sorry. People are usually happier when they know they've taken my photo.
Mrs. Knight, will you please read the summary of the minutes of January twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five's meeting?
Minutes of council, January twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five. Committee reports. Community Partnerships Committee recommended that legislation be prepared authorizing the city to support the OML challenge of an AT&amp;T tariff application. Streets and sidewalks committee recommended that legislation be prepared, authorizing agreement with American Structure Point regarding a feasibility study of the intersection of West Main Street, Experiment Farm Road and Stanfield Road, and this was discussed. Committee also recommended that legislation be prepared authorizing a contract for the two thousand twenty-five paving program. Resolution number R three, two thousand twenty-five, support the Ohio Municipal League Challenge of the AT&amp;T Tariff Application, first reading and adopted. Resolution number R four, two thousand twenty-five, agreement amendment with American Structure Point for the feasibility study of the intersection of West Main with Stanfield and Experiment Farm Road was given first reading. Resolution number R five, two thousand twenty-five, advertise for bids for the two thousand twenty-five paving program, first reading and adopted. Following various comments, council adjourned at seven fifty P.M.
Move to adopt the minutes as read.
Second. Motion to adopt the minutes, uh, Mr. Twist, second by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Committee reports tonight, starting with building and utilities. Mr. Pierce?
Thank you, Mr. Rozell. President Rozell. Uh, the committee members Snee and Pierce met January twenty-seventh regarding bidding for quick lime for the treatment of water during the committee, during two thousand twenty-fu- two thousand twenty-five. The city of Dayton provides lime to the city under an agreement. There have been times when the city needs to supplement the amounts that Dayton can supply. A backup contract with a chemical supplier provides a unit price to assure that the city is able to acquire the quantity of quick lime needed at any time. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for quick lime for two thousand twenty-five at a cost not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's respectfully submitted by Councilman Bobby Phillips, Councilwoman Lynn Snee, and myself as chair, Samuel Pierce.
Anyone have any questions on that? Moving on to personnel. Mrs. Snee?
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee members Snee and Pierce met January twenty-seventh regarding consenting to appointments to the Human Relations Council and the Community Reinvestment Area Housing Council. There were no questions regarding these appointments, and as this is not a matter of legislation, I would move that Robert Lewis be appointed to the Human Relations Commission for a term through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven.
I'll second that.
Motion by Miss Snee for those appointments for Human Relations?
For the Human Relations Commission.
Human Relations Commission, and second by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
And, Mr. President, I would like to move that Michael Hammer and Donna Deville be appointed to the Troy Reinvestment Area Housing Council for terms through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven.
I'll second that as well.
Motion by Mrs. Snee, or not, and second by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, could you please call the roll on that one?
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
And, Mr. President, that concludes our report that is respectfully submitted by Mr. Phillips, Mr. Pierce, and myself as chair.
Thank you very much. Recreations and Parks, Mrs. Westfall?
Uh, the Park and Rec Committee met on the twenty-seventh. Um, they provided a recommendation of council, or met on providing a recommendation of council regarding authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to the city of Troy, Ohio, to enter into an amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with American Structure Point, Inc., to add the update of the City of Troy Comprehensive Parks and Recreation Master Plan at a cost not to exceed eighty thousand. And then we have the second one. Do I address that?
Any questions on that? You may continue.
And then also, um, we met, uh, to provide a recommendation to council regarding the recommendation of the Board of Park Commissioners to authorize the temporary activation of the Dora for the Treasure Island Concerts on June twenty-first, July fourth, and August second, two thousand twenty-five, and authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to execute the Treasure Island Non-Ticketed Use Agreements for June twenty-first, August and August second concert dates.
Any questions on that? Submitted back, right?
Yeah, and that's it, respectfully submitted by Ms. Marshall, Mr. Widdon, and myself as chair.
Thank you very much. Moving on to citizens' comments. At this point in time, you have two minutes if you want to come up and comment on anything on the agenda tonight. Please come to the podium, give your name and address. To Mrs. Knight for the record.
Bradley Bermaner, one oh five Crestwood Drive. Thank you very much for the opportunity to address you this evening. I'd like to just have several questions about R dash four dash two thousand twenty-five, the agreement, amended professional services agreement with Structure Point regarding the, uh, roundabout. I read a article in Civic Capacity recently that causes me to raise some questions about this particular piece of legislation. And not the, not in the least is the fact that that intersection was rated twenty-ninth, and I don't know if it was from the state or what, what the ranking was, twenty-ninth for crashes, twenty-ninth. Why don't you think about that number for a minute? Because it causes me to question whether or not a roundabout is needed at that intersection. I can understand it if maybe it was in the top ten, top five, top three, we would need it. But I just don't see how a twenty-nine, a ranking of twenty-nine out of whatever really justifies the matter. I remember several years ago when they were doing, undergoing the reconstruction of Experiment Farm Road North, and some of you may remember that big dip that they had at Eldine Road. I mean, that was a huge dip. They leveled that out, and the intention was at that time that trucks would go north on Experiment Farm Road to Farrington Road and pick up seventy-five that way. My question to this council is, I know we probably can't enforce that, but couldn't we strongly suggest that that route be followed? Because it would cut down on a lot of the truck traffic at that intersection. It would, I think it would reduce the capacity. So I think these things are just things we need to explore rather than throwing good many after bad. And the roundabout project has gone from three and a half million dollars to dang near seven million dollars in a short amount of time. That's all I've got.
Thank you.
Mr. Rozell, can I please?
Yes, you may.
briefly respond? Brad, I, I appreciate your comments, but I think if you would go to the civic capacity that was released January twenty-fifth, there was a clarification by the author of civic capacity with regards to that, that says, quote, "A feasibility study is not to prove a roundabout as the chosen alternative, but to show the best preferred alternative for the intersection." I believe that's the purpose of the feasibility study, isn't to, um, mark up or to condone a, a roundabout, I think, uh, and I think there was some, and I understand the confusion because I think there was some misunderstanding about that at the committee level and perhaps at the council level. But there was a subsequent, uh, release of questions and answers by, uh, Ms. Butera and Jill, which was subsequently published. And I think if you read that, you'll see the, uh, the purpose behind that. So I appreciate the time and I appreciate you being an involved citizen, but I can tell you I don't believe that, uh, there's been any decisions made on what's best for that intersection.
All right, anyone else? Moving on to resolutions. Mrs. Knight, could you read Resolution R four, two thousand twenty-five, please?
Resolution number R four, two thousand twenty-five, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the city of Troy, Ohio, to enter into an agreement amendment with American Structure Point, Inc. of Columbus, Ohio, for a feasibility study of the intersection of West Main Street with Stanfield Road and Experiment Farm Road in the city of Troy, Ohio, cost not to exceed one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. This is the second reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Motion to suspend by Mr. Phillips, second by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Move to adopt, second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Twist, second by Mr. Phillips. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Mrs. Knight, can we please read R six, two thousand twenty-five, please?
Resolution number R six, two thousand twenty-five, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the city of Troy, Ohio, to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for quick lime for the water treatment plant for calendar year twenty-twenty-five, cost not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and this would be a backup to the contract with the city of Dayton, first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Motion to suspend by Mr. Phillips, second by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Twist, second by Mr. Widdon. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll. My bad. Second by Mr. Pierce.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. It was all three of us at the same time in using, so. Mr. Widdon can have it.
Widdon.
Thank you.
It was a tie when they threw it to first base.
We either arm wrestle forward or something.
Didn't know this was like, uh, you know, rock, paper, scissors.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Like Family Feud or something.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, could you please read Resolution R seven, two thousand twenty-five, please?
Resolution number R seven, two thousand twenty-five, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the city of Troy, Ohio, to enter into an amended professional services agreement with American Structure Point, Inc. of Columbus, Ohio, for a comprehensive park, park and recreation master plan update for the city of Troy, Ohio. This has been recommended by both the, uh, Park Board and Recreation Board, cost not to exceed eighty thousand dollars, first reading.
Move to suspend the rules?
Second.
Motion to suspend by Mr. Widdon, second by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Move to adopt?
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Widdon, second by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Moving on to ordinances. Mrs. Knight, would you please read ordinance O two, two thousand twenty-five?
Ordinance number O two, two thousand twenty-five, ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the city of Troy, Ohio, to execute a Treasure Island Non-Ticketed Use Agreement for two thousand twenty-five events at Treasure Island Park. This covers the concerts for June one and August two, first reading.
Move to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend by Mr. Widdon, second by Mr. Phillips. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Motion to adopt, second.
Motion to adopt by Mrs. Westfall, second by Mrs. Snee. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
No.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Would you please read ordinance O three, two thousand twenty-five?
Ordinance number O three, two thousand twenty-five, ordinance permitting use of certain real property in the designated outdoor refreshment area for use as a designated outdoor refreshment area for events on June twenty-one, July fourth, and August two of two thousand twenty-five, first reading.
Move to suspend. Second.
Motion to suspend by Mr. Phillips, second by Mr. Widdon. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Phillips.
Second.
Second by Mr. Severt. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Widdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
No.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
All right. Moving on to communications and announcements. Are there any this week, Mrs. Knight?
Only the reminder of filing the financial disclosure statements.
Mayor, anything tonight?
Um, I just wanted to, um, on behalf of the city, express our condolences to the Robinson family. Um, Tom Robinson passed away last week, and, um, he may be an unknown name to a lot of the community, but, um, if you've ever been to the YMCA, that is the Robinson branch. Stan gave us a list of a few things. They've done so much that it's hard to come up with a complete list, but just off the top of his head, Duke Park, Robinson Reserve, the Christmas lights on the levee, the rec programs, the YMCA, Troy Foundation donations. They've done a lot through the Troy Foundation, Columbus Foundation, two wings on the Ohio State University Library, the Robinson Wing and the Duke Wing, Edison State College, just a few of the many things they've done to impact the community and the state, actually. So just, um, our condolences to the Robinson family.
Mr. Titterton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a few dates to keep in mind. First of all, February seventeenth is President's Day. Uh, city hall, uh, city offices will be closed. Recycling and, and refuse pickup will be on schedule. Couple of dates coming up for Committee of the Whole meetings related to the Streetscape project, uh, that are of note, and we will be posting this on social media, et cetera. Uh, February twenty-fourth, uh, we'll have a, a presentation by our landscape architecture design firm regarding some options and recommendations related to, uh, dressing up Proudly Plaza, uh, as part of that project. And then following up, the, uh, uh, the group that is doing the Streetscape design, uh, headed by LJB, will make a presentation on the schematic designs that they've come up with. That will be on Monday, March tenth. Uh, those meetings will start at six o'clock, I believe.
Yes.
Still at six. Um, and so, uh, everybody, it is, they are open to the public and everybody is invited. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Location of those, please.
Uh, they'll be here.
They'll be here.
Council chairs. Law director.
Uh, Mr. President, I don't have anything to add this evening.
Other. Mr. Figgy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing at this time.
You want to go first or last?
What's that?
You want to go first or last? I can go. You can go.
Thanks, uh, Mr. President. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, bring to the attention of the community and council and, uh, administration, the, uh, implementation of an app, uh, on behalf of the city of Tip City. It's, uh, under my Tip City app. I think it went into effect around November of two thousand twenty-four. Uh, and it's very well organized, and I think there's some, um, I guess, question as to whether it would be utilized by citizens in our community. And so I guess I would, uh, throw out the question that, uh, if you have the opportunity, take a look at it, and if it's something that you as a community, or you as a council member, or you as, uh, part of the administration or the city, uh, would have some interest in looking at it, I do think it's something that we should explore. Uh, it's, uh, again, very, very well put together. Uh, I've shown it to some people at the ATP meeting this morning, as well as to other members of the community. Uh, and I think we would be well served by, uh, any other vehicle that would assist us in communicating. Uh, it's divided, you can even pay your utility bill off of it, so. Uh, and it's done by the same people who do our website, and it's coordinated with the website. So, uh, it's called my Tip City app. Like I said, it just recently went into effect, and, uh, so take a look at it, and if, if it's not something that's appeasing, I understand that too, but I, I do encourage people to get involved and take a look at it. So, uh, what are you guys going to say about March twenty-second? Do you want me to? Uh, secondly, on March twenty-second is the, uh, at-large committee meeting at the, uh, I'm going to say this wrong, Villas of Halifax Community Room, which is at one hundred Nottingham. We'll have two more meetings to say it, but it's the, uh, it's the development. As, uh, you know, we like to, uh, incorporate different areas of town, so this is on the is on the north end of town at the development that would be north of Marshes, now known as Needlers, in Troy. And it's, you go in and kind of circle around, and there's a big community room there and clubhouse. And we would thank Mr. Harlow for allowing us the opportunity to use that and encourage people to come.
And I'll just add, that starts at 9 o'clock. We didn't say that, at that location. Just a general thank you to our city staff. I've had some questions that I've sent in recently, and the answers are always provided quickly with the information I need. So, just a general thank you for doing a great job.
Mrs. Westfall?
I don't have a whole lot to say, but I, I am happy to see the Main Street project moving along. I would like to see our polls changed, but that is something we've been discussing, and I feel like the wooden polls date us somewhat and don't go along with what we've done downtown. And so, I would like to see some better polls put up.
Mr. Schilling?
Thank you, Mr. Rozell, President Rozell. I agree with Mrs. Westfall. Telephone polls are, I guess, vital in some areas, but I say, and based on the amount of money that we spent on our redoing West Main Street, I think it'd be much better for us to put our lights up on a more decorative style pole and, you know, show that the city's proud of what they've done and, you know, but I just think it's just beyond me how we came up with the wooden poles. On another note, I know we have passed the DORA for the summer, a couple, expanding the door for a couple summers, events, and I would like, I know that when we set up DORA originally, the council was to receive reports on a regular basis on the, how DORA is doing, both from an enforcement standpoint, any type of police actions, and whether or not the businesses downtown are actually benefiting from it. And I know we haven't received anything recently. I'm sure that report is in the pipeline, Mr. Titterington, and I'd be looking forward to receiving that report soon.
Well, that report was something that we talked about the first year to monitor it, and so, we did that, and we provided that. Not aware that that was an ongoing effort. I know that we haven't really had anything to report, but I will follow up with the police chief.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Can we poll the businesses and get their opinion as well?
We can. I mean, we get feedback from them. It's, it's not.
And again, what prompted us, we've had, we've had some very worthwhile discussions on addictive substances, and there's no doubt that alcohol is an addictive substance, and I just wanted to see what type of impact in questioning whether we should be promoting these types of things.
Yeah, other than, you know, once in a while, we will have somebody that misinterprets the, the code and, and maybe doesn't bring something from outside inside the DORA and vice versa that's random and rare. Other than that, though, it's, it's worked very well.
Look forward to hearing your report. Thank you.
Mr. Widdon?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing this evening.
Mr. Pierce?
I want to thank the mayor for bringing to our attention the passing of a great man in our community, and wanted to offer our condolences to the family as well. So, thank you.
Mr. Phillips?
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Twist?
Nothing this evening.
Just to add to your Robinson thing, there is a celebration of life, Craft and Cure 12 to 2, I think, on the 8th. For any of those who do Robinsons, I want to go say thank you to them. I won't re-cover everything that Mrs. Westfall and Jeff said, but yes, I, I've heard comments about the West Main Street, so we'll just leave it at that. Hope we're getting that straightened out. And then I would like to thank council for the two CRA approval, approval appointees tonight. They were selected by taking the forms that the public filled out off the system and picking the best ones out of the ones that checked for that committee. So, if council has appointments in the future, that's the procedure that I will continue to use. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Public comments, our staff, no comment. Public input on anything. Come to the podium, name and, name and address for the record, and have your comments. We are, we are not meeting on the President's Day, correct? We're meeting on the 18th?
18th.
Seeing no, seeing no comments, our next meeting will be February 18th on Tuesday, 7 o'clock. Here in council chambers, we are adjourned.